Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to July 30, 2013, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order 6:03 PM. We have a roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flags tonight will be led by Councilmember Friedman. You have occasion my Assistant City Clerk Rita Buchanan.
I join you with the flag.
The flag is in the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for our own.
Shall we pray? This evening we give thanks for our many blessings. Keep us reminded that we are all traveling the same road toward the same destination. Let us respect each other as we go. And as the council conduct the business of the city, we pray that all the decisions be made in accordance to your plan. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the July 30, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 25, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next?
Item three are presentations and appointments at 3A. There's an agenda preview for the meetings of August 6, 2013.
Mr. Ducktalian.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council. Next week's Housing Authority only has one item, which is the approval of the minutes from July 30. The council meeting in the evening has a number of items. Under consent at 5B is the Director of Finance regarding sales tax and property tax consulting services. 5C is the Director of Finance regarding utility users tax compliance and consulting services. 5D is Acting Director of Public Works regarding implementation of Glendale Bicycle Transportation Plan Phase One in connection with specification number 3521. At 5E is the Acting Director of Public Works regarding setting the time, date, and place for a public hearing for vacation of a certain portion of Verdugo Road at Verdugo Boulevard as part of the Verdugo Road and Honolulu Avenue intersection modification project, vacation case number 170V. And at 5F is the Acting General Manager of GWP regarding project management, construction oversight, inspection services for Water Systems CIP water main project. Under adoption of ordinances, 7A is an ordinance amending chapters 30.26 related to advertising signage overlay zones and 30.33 regarding signs. And 7B is an ordinance amending the zoning map. Under action items, there's just one. It's the Acting General Manager of GWP regarding the proposed ordinance amending chapter 13.44 of the municipal code related to electric rates and charges. And finally, under hearings, it's the Acting Director of Public Works regarding vacation of the first public alley west of Brand Boulevard, north of Palmer Avenue, and the easternly portion of the first alley north of Palmer Avenue and west of Brand Boulevard in Glendale. Alley vacation case number 171V.
Thank you. And what is next?
Item 3B, Mayor's commendation to Integrated Waste Truck Operator Dennis Cruz for his Good Samaritan Act, which helped prevent a tragic event.
Dennis, you want to come up? Oh, here. Oh, there's the baby. I was going to wear that. Hang on a minute. I see you brought your friends. If you want them up there for moral support, you can ask them.
Mark behind me in case I fall.
Well, okay, you got Rubik. I'd like to read the commendation first. "To Dennis Cruz, Public Works Integrated Waste, in recognition of your demonstration of heroism and exercising skill and quick thinking in attempting to save a life and preventing tragedy, your actions exemplify the city of Glendale's commitment to safe our public confidence and ensure the safety of the community and its residents. Thank you for representing Glendale and serving as a shining example to all." Rubik, would you like to say anything?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Dennis Cruz, who recently, in a brave and selfless act, prevented a tragic accident that could have had some really messy consequences. Basically, on July 17, at about 1:45 PM, while he was driving back to the yard, he noticed a man who was lying face down on the pavement next to his down motorcycle. He immediately stopped his truck and angled it so he could block both lanes of traffic. He then immediately called the fire department and got out of the car, got off his truck to encourage the injured person to remain still because there was an apparent head injury. In the meantime, he set out his safety triangles and waited for the fire personnel to arrive at the scene. And he had left his truck in that position for nearly half an hour to help the fire personnel take care of the injured gentleman. We are very proud for his bravery and selfless act, and we are pleased to introduce to you Dennis Cruz, his wife Elsie, and 16-year-old Miranda is here with us. No, I think they're fine right there. No, I like to say that I'm blessed to be one of the team members for the city of Glendale. And we have an excellent group of guys at work. It's just not coworkers, more like a family base. So, thank you very much.
I forget the name of the gentleman picks up my trash. Whenever he catches me out there working, he stops, find out how I'm doing, see if I'm alive, if I've got more trash to take out. He's real good. All of you guys are good. Really appreciate you. So, if you want to take your wife and the little one for an early dinner, well, no, she's having dinner now. Don't feel you have to stay. Don't feel that you have to stay. But thank you so much for coming. Okay, what is next?
Item three, see presentation of the 2013 Silver Excellence Award received by the city of Glendale for comprehensive integrated solid waste management.
Okay. Who's, what, where? Say it again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we are very happy to announce the city of Glendale received the prestigious national award from the Solid Waste Association of North America, SWANA, naming Glendale's Integrated Waste Management Division winner of the 2013 SWANA Silver Excellence Award in the Integrated Solid Waste Management System category. SWANA's Excellence Award program recognizes outstanding solid waste programs and facilities that advance the practice of environmentally and economically sound solid waste management through their commitment to utilizing effective technologies and processes in system design and operations, advancing worker and community health and safety, and implementing successful public education outreach programs. Program also must demonstrate that they are fiscally and environmentally responsible through their compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. And with that, I introduce to you Mario Nunez, our Integrated Waste Services Administrator, and with him are staff from his office.
Told you, you guys were good. Mario, would you like to say something in their behalf?
Well, this is a team effort, a family, as Dennis said. Our operation basically 15 years ago was in the red, in a deficit. We have an extremely financially healthy operation. We have the largest refuse commercial operation of any municipality in LA County. We have a state-of-the-art recycling center we are proud of. And with that, you know, we have the newest natural gas fleet, clean air, probably nobody else notices the smoke, the diesel smoke anymore. It's historically the newest. And on top of that, we have, if not the lowest, one of the lowest refuse rates in LA County. Just to put things into simple words, I think a lot of jurisdictions envy that we're giving the residents a 50% discount on a month after month basis. So, that's our operation, and we are proud of it, with the effort of the Director of Public Works and all the people, all the family of Glendale. You know, this is what we have done as a big family, and we are proud of it. Thank you.
Is Margaret Hammond here? Usually has something to say about your department. What number do you call for the?
Volki item pickup.
Volki item pickup? What number is that?
Hotline, 548-3916, or going to glendarecycle.com also, they can do a volki item request, or any kind of request, actually.
And you guys do eventually get it all. You may not get it as quick as some individuals might like, but you do do it. You've got 15 square miles of city to cover, so it's a lot of work. We all appreciate what you do. If you didn't do it, we'd know about it, believe me. Thank you a lot, Mario.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we've got a tremendous staff. There's also Dean, who's there in the audience. But Mario's been with the department for many years. He's brought it to an excellent level, and I love to boast about his background. He is a Harvard graduate. So, I think he's done as well academically as he's done in his professional life here at the city. And he certainly hires the right people along with Personnel Department.
Just one more thing, also sort of anecdotal reference to our department. Just a few months ago, we needed an extra green trash bin, and we made the request, and less than 24 hours later, it was in front of the house. Less than 24 hours.
That's the way they operate. And if you need the big trash bins, like, get them out there the next day also. Mario, you never told me you went to Harvard. God, he keeps these kind of things.
He doesn't tell people, but I do.
Gosh, Mario, you ought to brag about it. That means you're very bright. But look what you've done with the department. You know what you're doing.
And Mike also, Mike Weiderker also is part of the team there.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the next item. If you feel ready to leave, when you want to. What is next, please?
At item 3D is appointment of Linda Burns as a member of the Commission on the Status of Women.
Who? Never heard of her. Just kidding, folks.
So, Mr. Mayor, in essence, I'm nominating someone who was already on that commission. So, once approved, she'll be basically reappointed to this commission. I'll read her CV. It's not that long. Linda Anna Beckburns has been a Glendale resident for 38 years. She is a graduate of Toronto Teachers College and California Real Estate College. Her affiliations include hospice, VHVN, Rose Float Association, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, Glendale Beautiful, Women Civic, Patrons, Friends of the Library, ELX, CBRA, Southern California Sports Broadcast. She is a teacher, a wife, a mother, daughter, sister, niece, real estate agent, and property manager, and decorator. She's also retired from all those things. So, I'm nominating her for the commission.
Just a comment. That goes with the show a person can do in terms of volunteerism. That's what this city needs, volunteers. This lady can do it, means a lot of people can't if they wish to. So, with that, you've nominated her. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Congratulations, Linda.
Congratulations.
And next, please.
At item four are City Council and/or staff comments.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes, I have two items. I would like to nominate Sharon Wiseman for the Commission on the Status of Women. She's a longtime participant in Glendale civic life. And then, equally as important, I'd like to call Alex Wu to the podium, who is going to introduce. Alex Wu is the President of the Korean Sisters City Association, and he is going to introduce the artist and his wife, who are visiting from South Korea. And this is the artist who designed the monument that was placed at the Central Park today. So, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. Gives me great pleasure to introduce you to the artist that designed the monument that was placed at the Central Park earlier today. And once again, I would like to go ahead and thank the council members for this historic day, to make it happen for all the Korean-American residents in city Glendale, as well as in Southern California in general. We had a great turnout. We had about 500 people in attendance. We had mass media coverage, and I think that basically the purpose of the monument unveiling was to go ahead and just to let people know about the injustice and all the current still human trafficking that's still ongoing. I believe that we have brought on some light to that event today. So, without further ado, I would like to invite the artist that came from Korea to the unveiling, is Mr. Kim Eun-sung and Mrs. Kim Seok-kyong.
And Alex, if he could just tell the public about the monument itself, because I know there's a lot of different things that he's done.
What I'd like to do.
Come on, up here.
What I'd like to do is basically read to the general public, who wasn't able to attend the unveiling today, as to exactly the significance of the girl in the monument, and exactly what each attribute signifies. So, here it goes. "Torn hair symbolizes the girl being snatched from her home by the Imperial Japanese Army. Tight fists represent the girl's firm resolve for deliverance of justice. Bare and unsettled feet represent having been abandoned by the cold and unsympathetic world. Bird on girl's shoulder symbolizes a bond between us and the deceased victims. Empty chair symbolizes survivors who are dying of old age without having yet witnessed justice. Shadow of the girl is that of an old grandma, symbolizing passage of time spent in silence. Butterfly in shadow represents hope that victims may resurrect one day to receive their apology."
Do they like to say something?
한국에서 온 조각가 김 운성, 김 서경입니다. 김 서경입니다. 반갑습니다. Nice to meet you. You can translate.
Yeah, I'll go translate.
저희가 이제 조각하는 사람으로서 조각을 하려면 원래 이제 조각에 대해서 창작의 기쁨이 있습니다. 창작의 기쁨이 있는데 이번 작업을 하면서는 사실은 창작보다는 좀 고통과 아픔이 있었습니다. 그 이유는 그 어릴 때 할머님들이 어릴 때 당했던 모습 소녀들이 일본군의 석 노예로 당했을 때 느낌을 보면 느낌을 받으면서 그 고통을 함께 다 몸으로 느끼게 됐습니다. 그래서 이번 작품은 상당히 어렵게 힘들게 한 작업입니다. 그래서 점점 더이 고통이 심해져 가지고 이 작업이 이렇게까지 나올까라는 고민도 했었는데 나름대로 이것을 극복을 해가지고 이런 작업이 나오게 돼서 다행이라고 생각합니다.
I would try my best to capture what he said. Basically, he said, as an artist, it gives him great pleasure when he comes up with a new design and new concept. But with this particular design, he did go through a lot of anguish and pain, because trying to connect with the comfort woman issues and all the harmonies that have gone through this incident event through their lives. But he wasn't sure as to exactly how the end product will come out. But he's very pleased and very happy to be here, standing before you today, and having the city of Glendale welcoming the monument to be installed at the Central Park and unveiling today. So, he's very pleased, and he's genuinely thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
What might I say? Thanks again. Have a good evening.
It was a great event. I think we all felt great about what we did. Well-attended by everyone, including members of the Japanese-American community from Southern California, representing different Japanese-American organizations. They spoke at the event. They've helped us. This has been a community event. All of us have worked together here on the dais and out in the community. So, I'm very proud of Glendale, and I encourage everyone to go to the Central Park. It's a very touching monument, very low-key, but I think it essentially brings a point to anyone that will visit there. You're basically, it's a 14-year-old girl, young girl, sitting on a chair. It's very, very powerful. Thank you very much. You've come a long way, and I'm so happy that you're here with us tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Are we doing comments? Or just about this?
I'm just asking. It's council comments.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, I just want to first echo Mr. Quintero that today was a really proud moment, I think, for all of Glendale, to be the first city on the West Coast to have a Comfort Woman Memorial, which is a memorial for all of the innocent victims of war and for peace. So, it's a beautiful gesture. And I want to thank the Korean Sisters City Association for making this possible, Alex Wu and Chang Lee, who spearheaded the effort. And also to acknowledge Councilmember Quintero, who did a great job today, is Master of Ceremonies at the event. There was a lot of people, and it was the most cameras I've ever seen in Glendale, I think, by far. So, I know that we really put Glendale on the international map today, doing this, and we should all be very proud. And also, I wanted to just also mention that several of us were at the Alex Theater today for the groundbreaking. They've been, they've been working for a little while, but today was the official groundbreaking for the renovations that'll keep the Alex closed into the fall, but will make improvements that will make it a much more competitive and modern theater, more attractive to performances and shows and acts, and hopefully help it be a self-sustaining theater going into the future. Thanks to staff especially for pushing this project forward. It got caught up in the end of the redevelopment era. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to find the money to do the renovations, and because of the hard work of staff and the support of all of the council, we were able to move ahead. So, good luck to the Alex through their renovations. Can't wait to see it on the other end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? If not, let's move ahead.
And items 5A through D are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do you have note cards as a motion?
Move the consent calendar.
Okay.
Item six.
Roll call first.
Sorry, excuse me. Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
And Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
At item six are oral communications, the three-minute event announcement portion, and we have no cards.
Thank you, then. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay. At item eight, our action, 8A, Fire Chief Regarding Weed Abatement Charges for 2012, 2013. And at 8A1 is a resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
You have a brief statement, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Just very quickly, you've done this many times before.
Every year.
The county ended up clearing 73 parcels. Half of those were somewhere between, were less than $750 to be cleared. The balance were north of $750 to be cleared. We're asking that you ratify the charges. That way, the county can put them onto the assessment rolls.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Item 8B, Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Maple Park Improvement Project in Connection with Specifications Number 3514. At 8B1 is a resolution adopting plans and specs and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We would have Mr. Duran come up. It's another park improvement project that you've seen in terms of developing the spec. Now, we're getting ready to go out to bid, and we would ask for your blessing in doing so. Chess.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council, we were here three months ago requesting approval of the design, the conceptual design for Maple Parkside Improvement Project, which we received. We got some good feedback from council members, so we have incorporated feedback that we received, which I will mention in a little bit. So, we are before you to authorize the, authorize us to go out to bid and to advertise, and also to approve an increase to the design contract and to appropriate $100,000 to the project, so that we can go ahead and include the 12 parking spaces, the 12 additional parking spaces that we talked about three months ago, to the project, which would increase the parking from 12 to, I'm sorry, from 13 parking spaces to 25. And for a 3.8 acre park, that parking is definitely needed. So, in terms of the funding, to refresh your memory, for this project, we have a combination of CDVG funds and mitigation fee funds, which are the Development Impact Fee Funds. Currently, the project budget is $1.156 million.
Mr. Duran, this question, the CDVG, that was an earmark by the council?
Yes, yes, sir. In terms of the design development process.
Yes, Weaver. And the mitigated fees, those are the developer fees, correct?
Correct. Those are the developer fees.
So, the buildings are getting built and paid this fee.
Correct.
Good point.
In terms of the development design process, back in May of 2011, the council approved the initial appropriation of CDVG funds. And then, a year later, the council approved the design contract with the architect, Nar Duli Studio. In April of this year, the council approved the design concept and authorized the design team to develop the construction documents, which we have done. And the council also approved the appropriation of the mitigation fees that we just mentioned. This is the existing site. It was also just a few years ago that we underwent a multimillion-dollar rehabilitation of the community center, but we had not done anything to the site improvements. So, we're back with the site improvement phase of this project. In terms of the background of the facility, it's 3.8 acres, which is a pretty good size for a neighborhood park. The existing amenities include a children's play structure, a tennis court, walking paths, a picnic areas, or a number of picnic areas, a community building, and onsite parking. In 2011, the $4.5 million renovation of the community building was completed, and of that, $3 million was a State of California Prop 40 grant funds, and 1.5 was CIP funds. So, we're on to the next phase. In terms of the current scope of work, we are going to do a lot of irrigation work. We are going to add two group picnic areas, which is a high demand in that neighborhood, including 10 new tables. We are going to include two outdoor fitness areas, which currently don't exist, for a total of 12 outdoor pieces of equipment. We are going to add security lighting to the park. We're going to add a police patrol path to make it easier to monitor and patrol the park, and we're going to add new security cameras. We're going to make use of natural, local eco-friendly materials, which the designer will provide more details about in a few minutes. We're going to add a new toddler free play area with berms and boulders, which, again, we talked about a couple of months ago. The children's play area will have security improvements, including hedges to act as a natural barrier to separate them from other elements of the park. We will be upgrading the existing restrooms and the tennis court. If you've seen the court, it's in very poor condition. And as I mentioned earlier, we will be adding 12 new parking spaces, and we're requesting council's approval of the $100,000 to add those 12 spaces. Three months ago, when we were here, based on input that we received from the City Council, we did modify the fitness machines, so that now seven out of the 12 have operable parts, which, again, the architect could explain further in her part of the presentation. And the operable parts are preferred by elderly persons. persons. The machines are easier for elderly persons to use with the operable parts. The heights of the grass mounds, we are making a little bit taller to make them more challenging for the children. We are, and then we are adding the 12 parking spaces, which we talked about three months ago. So at this juncture, I will turn over the presentation to Jill Farfan of Narduli Studios, and she will review the design concepts with you one more time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So for those additional parking spaces, how much parkland are you losing for that? What percentage?
I'm going to ask Jill to answer that question, if that's okay.
Small percentage.
Maybe you can show on the site map the place where...
Here we go. Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Jill Farfan. I'm the architect and project manager with Narduli Studio for the Maple Park site improvements. And to address your question, the new parking area proposed is shown right here, and access being right here. So this whole area is the new proposed parking. And it would provide eight or 10 spaces, including one accessible space, and then five additional for events parking.
Less than 5,000 square feet?
Excuse me?
Less than 5,000 square feet. Approximately that?
Approximately 5,000 square feet, probably a little under.
Acres, 42,000. So it's not even a quarter.
Correct. Oh, no, it's not even close to a quarter.
That help answer your question? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just... Oh, thank you. Okay. Just to embellish a little bit about Jess reviewed the scope with you all, we're adding the friendly, pedestrian-friendly entries in here, embellishing this one, and creating a new one here. We're putting in, we're widening the path to create a safety police drive access through the park. We are creating two fitness areas, as I mentioned. There are seven pieces here, five pieces here, and two picnic areas, one here and one here. The new children's play area is based on natural elements, boulders, sand, and grass berms, and that area is right here. And it's surrounded by a planted hedge that surrounds that whole area to provide a barrier to the street. There's new planting berms here and here to also provide a softer element from the street side to the parking areas. And we've provided, we've also designed 15, what we call site markers, throughout the pathways of the park. And it's a stained concrete area with a boulder and capping it into the grass area. It could be used, it's, and they're also have engravings on some of them to provide some interest and creative element to the park. And many of the engravings are of natural elements as well. These are the fitness areas that I mentioned. This is the western one. And these are the five pieces that are going to be located in this area, which is mulch, ground cover. Three of the pieces are now operable, based on feedback from council and the community. And the other fitness area, again, it shows seven pieces. Three, again, of those are operable pieces. And there are two adjacent to the tennis, so this makes an entire fitness zone in this area. The natural play-based area for the toddlers, this is a rendering, it shows the mounds and the approximate height of those mounds for some creative natural play. And we are, again, we're using planting throughout the site, continuous curvilinear hedge to bind the site against the street edge, sustainable planting, and, again, kid-friendly play areas. We've also introduced an entire new lighting package, which I didn't show on the previous slide, but these are, they are efficient, energy-efficient, and they're one of the most advanced lighting systems that's set at a timer where it will be at a dim setting, and then if someone walks in front of it in the later hours, it becomes activated. So it saves a lot in energy costs. Again, native planting and natural play and addressing diversity, sustainability, and accessibility are primary goals. And this is the general schedule. We are nearing completion of the documents. We'll be advertising for bids next month, with the bid opening following month, and a six-month construction period starting in November and then ending in approximately April 2014.
Let's hope it's not too rainy.
Let's hope. Correct.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Yeah, one. This is considered a South Glendale park improvement?
Yes, sir.
Let's see. A couple of weeks ago was Maryland Park in South Glendale?
Cedar Park.
Maryland?
You did Cedar too recently.
Cedar, that...
That's right.
Two, few million dollars in South Glendale parks.
Well, don't forget the turf for Pacific Park.
Oh, yeah.
As for the artificial turf.
We're just talking amongst ourselves.
But I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So this is a very heavily-used park, and I didn't see any discussion of tables and chairs and seating, picnic tables or benches and things like that. So how are those, have you decided where those are going to go, or?
Oh, yes. I must have skimmed over it too quickly, but on the site plan, you can see these are, these blue circles are new picnic pads, and this one has five tables and benches that obviously are with the tables. And then there's also some freestanding benches along the edges. So that is a whole new sitting area. And then this is the second new picnic area that is seven tables and with seating, and also some freestanding seating on the edges as well.
Does that design add to the current capacity for seated enjoyment, I guess?
Well, one of the primary goals was to use it for entertainment spaces. Apparently, it's heavily used for parties, birthday parties and gatherings. So this makes two very rentable areas for that purpose.
Is that adding on to what already is there?
It does. Yeah, we're, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. Yeah, there, it does. It adds on to. We're not removing any seating.
Okay. Jess, did you want to say something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be very clear on the 12 additional parking spaces and the space that is being used up. It is almost 5,000 square feet, and it was a combination of green space and picnic tables with pads that had been relocated to other parts of the park. That's what was lost in exchange for the additional parking.
Thank you. Okay, I have two speakers on this. First one, Harvey Pearson, three minutes.
Councilmembers, I'm Harvey Pearson. This time, I've got my glasses, so it won't be blurry when I go here. If I may to misquote a tiny piece of Shakespeare, "I come before you not to criticize or critique council member plans or projects, but to praise you all collectively for approving this item. Particularly, I'd like to thank Councilman Laura Friedman for her bringing up the issue of a lack of over 30," I wrote past 30, same thing, right, "friendly exercises." Being slightly over 30 myself, I appreciate the, for example, the, oh, I left it back in my chair, but the cardio walker is up there, I guess, but that's a great one. They could even have two of those, as far as I was concerned, am concerned. That said, I was going to observe that the cement, that the movable parts of the exercises will evidently be set in, should, like in other parks, have a good layer of dirt or chips over the cement, which would make their use easier on a senior's feet, plus be less likely to result in someone's being injured in a fall. And so I found out talking to Adreeni, I guess it is. She said, yes, indeed, that's exactly what they plan to do, is put chips. And so it sounds, everything sounds fine to me. I would leave, oh, this is the, the cardio walker that myself, I've never tried BYO's cardio walkers. I tried Greenfields.
Bring your own.
What?
BYO, bring your own.
Bring your own? Is that what it is? Yeah. Yeah, $2,000 apiece or something like that. And Triactive Americas, which I just happened to include a copy of them here. But this looks pretty darn good to me. So there you go. And I'll just leave this.
Just, Harvey just showed next April. You can be the first one to try it.
My next statement?
April 2014.
Okay, that'll be, it doesn't rain too much, like you said.
Uh, April, the rainy season's over.
Plus a south leaning.
That's true. Next speaker, Mike Mohill.
I'm not having started yet, Rita. Thank you.
Start now.
Please. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'm glad to support the upgrades at Maple Park and other parks. My question, as I said a few weeks ago, why does most of our park funding come not from the general fund or capital improvement fund, but from state and federal grants? Since the height of the recession, Glendale has spent approximately $33 million on park improvements, but sadly, less than 25% comes from the general fund. Again, park improvement money mostly comes from grants. We can pat ourselves on the back of all the money we've been spending on the parks, but it's not city money. It's state and federal money. Since about 90% of park money comes from grants, why does our city council match the 90% with city money to even expand our parks and recreational facilities further? Oh, I forgot, we're busy allocating money for salaries and pensions of our city workers.
Stay on topic.
South Glendale is the highest and most congested area of Glendale, and soccer is the most popular sport of the residents. Then why doesn't any soccer complex exist in North Glendale, as in North Glendale? Another mini park is not needed, but it is the time to plan ahead and condemn property in South Glendale for a soccer complex. Yes, we will have to relocate residents, but we need to do something. What is the message you are telling the residents of South Glendale if you can't find space and money for a soccer complex, just like the people in North Glendale? By the way, whatever happened to the possible purchase of the target property along San Fernando Road for a possible soccer complex? Instead of allocating money for new and improved parks and soccer fields, our city council allocated about $30 million this year for government pensions and more for next year to come. On another note, at the Adult Recreational Center, the grass area continues to be underutilized, putting tall screening along the perimeter of the grassland to prevent a soccer ball from going into the ongoing traffic, what allow for a soccer pony league to flourish. Again, I was there last week. It's underutilized. Just put a tall fence so the balls won't go onto Colorado Boulevard, and the kids can play. It's going to be a pony league, not a high professional group. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Well... Mr. Weaver, I'll go first.
You go first.
So we have a complaint now that 75% of the money is coming from grants and whatever the percentage is. Gee, what should we do? Let that money go somewhere else? Does that make any sense? I want to compliment the park staff for going out and getting that money. I think that shows the competent people we have working on these programs. And then, once again, we hear that it's a good idea to move families out of there. Not only is it increasing, would it be incredibly expensive to have multifamily units bought, but then the expense of moving the families out, I don't think so. I don't think that's what we want to do in Glendale. So where's a compassion for the renters living in South Glendale? In terms of soccer, we have a field at Pacific Edison that is being used on a regular basis, and we've actually already allocated the money, and we'll soon begin construction on an artificial turf, which means there'll be even more use. And then the concept of soccer at Central Park at that location, I don't think makes any sense. We need some passive areas. I've seen families there on the weekends and little kids running around. And then another, saw a little kid, this was months ago, actually flying a kite. Haven't seen a kite in quite a while. So anyway, the Central Park, I think, should remain as a green space and a passive, a passive space.
Thank you. You kind of lapped on what I was going to say. Yeah, Pac Ed. That's going to have plenty of soccer on it, more than it has. That's in South Glendale. And four acres is not a mini park. Never heard of a four-acre mini park. Mr. Houdiani, do you know many four-acre mini parks around? I don't think there are. And grants, they're competitive. We compete against other cities and jurisdictions that want to grant money. We prove that this city deserves the money we get, and we should turn it down. Wow. Turning down money that we've competed to get. Unbelievable.
Well, that our residents paid. These are tax monies.
Well, yeah, yeah. A big scheme of things. I'll grant money.
Let me point out another...
Yeah, go right ahead.
Another error in the logic of Mr. Mohill. He's saying that we should pay money from our general fund to build these parks, where in this case, we're using grant money and we're using fees that we're placing on the new builders and developers. So, you know, I applaud staff again, reiterate Mr. Quintero's remarks. I applaud staff for finding the available grant monies, as well as the council for taking the tough decision to impose a library and parks mitigation fee on the new developers as they build those new units without a single cent coming from the general fund. That's, you should be applauding the city council, Mr. Mohill, rather than criticizing them. So if I'm showing a little bit of impatience with your continuing fallacy of logic, please excuse me. And folks at home, please excuse me also, but I hope that you're all listening to the continual dissonance that's coming out of Mr. Mohill.
That's a good word. Well, he tried to get the pensions and salaries into this issue, but I cut him off on that. Every time Mr. Mohill gets up, no matter what the topic, he tries to weave pension benefits into it. Anyway...
I'm prepared to...
I want to ask, can we move all three at one time?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I will move the two resolutions, at 8B1, at 8B3, and the motion at 8B2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananya.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. What is next, please?
Item 9A, Director of Community Development Regarding Glendale Register Nomination and Mills Act Application for Property Located at 1050 Hillcroft Road. At 9A1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
George Choa?
We have the first of three very unique properties for your consideration for Mills Act and placement on local register. And our new senior urban planner, Mr. Platt, will go through these rather quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll go through these properties as a group, if you would like.
I open the public hearing. Is that for all three, or?
No, it's just one at a time.
Okay. 9A, I open the public hearing.
One at a time. 1050 Hillcroft Road is a beautiful Spanish colonial revival house in the Rosmoyn neighborhood. It's a contributing structure in the historic district. When we looked at this, we thought it was especially interesting because of the way it reflects the slope of the site, which is an interesting response for a Spanish house in this area. It has many... It has many of the classic character finding details that we associate with the site, and you can see many of these in these photos. A few unique features, like these horseshoe arches and other aspects at the back of the house, retain the quality of the design that's seen at the front. When this was brought to the Historic Preservation Commission, there was kind of a split vote, three to two, that we just wanted to draw the council's attention to. There's a second floor rear arcaded porch, and this was, this stairway was built in front of it in more recent years by the current owner, and commissioners felt that that was an issue. But nonetheless, the commission voted as a group to recommend designation of the property and the Mills Act contract because of the quality of the architecture.
Was that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Speed record.
Well, it's another nice looking house.
Okay, well, I...
Close the hearing, sir.
I drove by this...
Close the public hearing.
Property, I've driven by it many times, but drove by it to check it out. I'm in agreement, so I move that...
9A1?
9A1.
Second.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, Mr. Platt, let me raise the issue that, that I think the Historic Preservation Commission saw. Those stairs in the back certainly, I think, detract from the...
That was an addition.
From the overall integrity. I mean, can...
That was an addition.
I mean, and I believe that, you know, our history with these Mills Act homes are only to approve the finest examples, most outstanding examples of architecture, and I, I mean, that's quite a, you know, I mean, I don't see those stairs fitting in at all with that house. It detracts from the architecture, and those curved windows that were so praised in the front are completely obscured and covered up essentially by that stairwell, as well as those white pillars going up. They have no matching to the rest of the, the rest of the building. So why, I mean, why would staff say that despite those stairs, that this should be on the Mills Act?
Well, we have many Mills Act properties that have been altered over the years, especially rear additions and changes made, pools installed, new decks, new patio covers. This fits into that kind of category of changes. We look at it as something that's reversible in the future. If someone wanted to get rid of it, the arcade porch would still be there. The current owner wants to keep it because it provides access down to the backyard, and it's on a steep site.
I thought you can't make any changes to the Mills Act home once it's approved, then?
No, no, we allow changes to all historic properties. We just evaluate them to make sure that they're not gonna destroy the historic character. We wouldn't have approved this if it came to us now, if it were designated, but we accept it as a grandfathered condition that someone in the future could take off, and the house would still have its original form.
The rest of the house, I think, is, is a fine and pristine example of the architecture. I see those stairs as just being, of course, you don't see it from the front of the house, but we're supposed to take, we're supposed to take the house as a whole, and I, I find that as a huge detraction from the architectural integrity of that house. So, I don't know if anyone else sees it that way.
It is, does impact, and in reality, it probably doesn't belong, but it's, it's there functionally for them. You know, to me, the front and everything else overrides the interior. It was on the fall home tour. When was it? Just last year, it was on the tour. So...
Yeah, but with all due respect, that doesn't, that's not the standard we use for these ones.
And the owner, apparently original, was the principal of Roosevelt Middle School for a number of years, 31 years. Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Najarian, you're making a very good point, and if in fact it was sort of noticeable from the street, let's say it was on the side, I would also agree with you. We would have to require the owner to take it down if they wanted to apply for it, since it's in the very back and can't see it from the street, then I'll support it, because I think you've made a very good point.
Maybe the owner will take it down one day. Is there a motion on?
I'll make a motion. I'll just add that I saw this house when it was on the Glendale Historic Society's home tour.
Right, last year.
And it's really a spectacular house. The pictures don't do it justice, and the interior is really beautiful and very original. And I do think that the saving grace for the staircase is that it can be removed. It's not, they didn't destroy the back of the house and then built the staircase, so it can be...
There's another set of stairs, right? From the back to the left?
Jade, the old stairs are still existing?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are stairs inside the house that go down, and a kind of an exterior stairway also. This, this connects to a deck.
Functionally, it's good for the owners, but it could be removed, and there's still a way to get down there.
Still get downstairs.
I'll second the next.
It's been moved to second already.
It's already moved to second.
Support.
Ms. Quintero? Moved, and Ms. Friedman seconded.
I don't care. Okay, roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right. Next, please.
Item 9B, Director of Community Development regarding Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application for property located at 1471 Royal Boulevard. At eight, I'm sorry, 9B1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
1471 Royal Boulevard is also located in a historic district. In this case, it is in the Royal Boulevard District, and it is a non-contributor to the district because it was built after a period of significance that was identified in the survey for the area. It's an interesting modern style house. It's kind of a soft modernism. It doesn't have some of the harsh lines that sometimes people associate with the style. It's also the home of Paul Burkhart, who can give all of the members of the diocese a hope that perhaps you will be...
Mayor.
The third mayor who has a house named after himself or herself in the future. But Paul Burkhart was on the council, was also mayor. He was also very significant in the home building and the finance industry, so he kind of represents this interesting post-World War II development, when his valley savings, was giving loans to people. He was on the board with Casey Stengel, and he was also very active in kind of national home builders associations of the era. His son actually designed the house, so it's kind of a family affair, and Mr. Burkhart Senior lived in it until he died in 1986. You can see it's very simple in its style, has very elegant lines, very crisp design, and then some interesting details around the doors and some other locations on the house. Here's a few of the rear facade and the yard.
Are those vinyl windows?
They are not, they're steel windows.
They look like vinyl.
White, painted white, so...
Didn't have vinyl.
Fool us.
Didn't have vinyl then? I don't think.
And when the commission voted on this project, and that was a three to one vote, they felt it was significant both for its association with Paul Burkhart, under criterion two, and also for its architecture, under criterion three.
I forgot to open the public hearing on this. Want to comment? What year was this thing built?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, 1949.
Now, see, I was 10 years old when they built this house. You're saying it's historic.
That's right.
Does that make me...
We're waiting for the Weaver house.
What do you think of that, Mr. Quintero?
Yeah.
That's a historic house.
Jade, is this house, do you think that it has some Art Deco influences?
It has some glass block, can barely see over here.
Is that original, that glass?
Yeah, seems to be. We're not, I'm not 100% sure about that, but it's kind of works for the period. I wouldn't say it has Art Deco, it's a little late for Art Deco, it's more like a late modern kind of style. We just kind of lump it in as modern.
I have one more question. My father built our house in 1938. I can still remember him telling me that the framing of the house was so heavy you couldn't see through the walls. Now, if that's be true, and it's Spanish, sits on a hilltop. I find out who built it and everything, can I contact this guy that's in here? Can you look that stuff up?
Sure, yeah, I can help you out.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'm just curious, it was a noted architect.
Mm-hmm. And fortunately, we don't know architects usually. All the local cities have a line for architect on the building application or the permit application, but for some reason, Glendale didn't do that. So, every, every little bungalow in Pasadena, they know the architect, and unfortunately, we don't know most of them.
Maybe mine was a noted one.
Could be.
From the 30s. But I hope someday that people that own that house now will make it a, ask for historic designation on it.
There's hope.
Wonderful house. Okay, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion on 9B1?
I'll move 9B1.
Second? Okay, roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
And Mayor Weaver?
All right. Next, please.
Item 9C, Director of Community Development regarding Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application for property located at 1753 Hillcrest Avenue. And 9C1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
1753 Hillcrest.
I'll open the public hearing, so I don't get in trouble.
1753 Hillcrest is another Spanish colonial revival house. This is located in northwest Glendale, it's not in a historic district. When you look closely at this house, it just kind of grows in the number of interesting features it has. Especially interesting because of its window configuration, the front porch, and some of the details at the front porch. The massing of the building is really classic for the Spanish colonial style. It's hard to see in the slides, but it has a very interesting stucco treatment that we haven't seen on many buildings, and certainly none that have been designated at this point. But it's a good combination of many of the classic features of the Spanish style, with ironwork, tilework, interesting stucco work, and interesting configuration. Here's some other photos. And here is the back of the house. As part of the commission's recommendation for the Mills Act, they recognized that this aluminum carport that was added in the late 50s, I think, is obviously not original to the house. The house has no garage because of an earlier land split when the garage was separated from the property. The owners have agreed to come back to the commission with a proposal to construct a new garage on the large property, and the commission reviewed kind of some preliminary sketches and felt that that was a possibility, that it would be easily approved in terms of the style of the house and the amount of space on the lot. So one of the Mills Act conditions would be that this carport be removed from the property, and the commission found it eligible under criterion three for the quality of its architecture.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Najarian?
This is the type of house that I feel deserves Mills Act recognition. I, I do find the architecture quite, quite stunning, and I very much agree with your recommendation and commission's that they do something with that carport to bring it to the same style as the house. So, in case anyone's out there thinking, what, you know, wondering, what does Najarian think about when he's up there? This is the type of house that I do feel clearly represents the type of candidate for Mills Act.
Would you like to move it?
In fact, I like it so much, I will move it.
I'll second it.
Good. Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
And I forgot to close it, the public hearing.
It's quite close.
It's closed now. Okay, what is next, please?
At item six, oral communications, this is following the business agenda. This discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. First speaker, Curtis Holland, followed by Sherri Stubbs.
Honorable mayor, council members. I'm glad I was delayed, because I've heard some things here that's been very interesting. Number one, you have some projects that needs to be funded. Number two, you also have some economic issues you're having to deal with. And number three, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned they want to go about having to compete for funds. I'm here to address all of those. My name is Curtis Holland, and I've lived in the Los Angeles area for 27 years, and I'm currently retired from a 40-year career in corporate aviation. I'm here representing a worldwide humanitarian funding institution, and I've been serving for the foundation, I mean, for the foundation for about eight years now. I'm here to reach out to you, the leadership of Glendale, to, in an effort to bring a solution to the economic problems of your city. And that solution would come by and through the H. Martin Foundation. The H. Martin Foundation is today in the process of reaching out to all the mayors of Southern California with the express intent of collaborating with them to provide 100% funding for all of the city's various programs and projects that would provide services and create jobs. Now, these funds are privately owned, and they're very much recognized by the highest monetary authorities, as well as the United States government. However, I do need to clarify that these funds are not a government grant, nor are they a donation nor a loan. Now, in addition to funding all of your city's various programs, the H. Martin Foundation also would like to build a model project here, which would be the H. Martin Global Community Center of Glendale. Now, this center would house and as well as centralize all of the various nonprofit organizations and humanitarian agencies that would provide services and create jobs for the benefit of the people of Glendale. The H. Martin Foundation also will consider 100% funding of all of the city's existing projects. That, again, would create jobs locally, but also would provide services for the families, such as free childcare, free before and after school programs, complete scholarship programs, and, in cases of an emergency, disaster relief and community development. Once a program or a project is funded by the H. Martin Foundation, then all the leadership and the volunteers of that organization would then receive salaries with complete benefits, again, creating jobs in your community. And the services mentioned earlier, the free childcare and the scholarships, all of those would become part of those benefits, therefore encouraging some people to get off of welfare. I do have some information here for you that will briefly describe how we hope to collaborate with your city during the funding process, as well as giving you a better understanding of certain expectations. And then, after you have reviewed the material, and you're interested, you can contact me personally to initiate an appointment with our funding principal. My contact information is in here also. And I will remain for a few more minutes to meet with any of you or any other interested party to provide additional information. I do thank you for your time and your attention, and we do look forward to working with you very soon. Again, we thank you.
Thank you. If you'd just give it to the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Give the information to the city clerk, and we'll take a look at it and stuff, and we think it'll work, we'll be giving you a call.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What part?
Free money. Don't turn that down. Okay, next speaker is Sherri Stubbs, followed by Abbott Hoffman.
My name is Sherri Stubbs. I live at 3200 Far East in Locust Center, far north Glendale. Two years ago, while on vacation, I spent every spare minute in airports, on planes, and in the hotel reviewing the North Glendale Community Plan, as well as on the hotel computers, emailing comments on it back to community members. This year on vacation, again, I spent a great deal of time corresponding with community members on another issue involving the North Glendale Community Plan. So our vacations have become a bit of a joke, what will happen in the community next year that I will spend vacation time on. But how I have spent and do spend my time on community issues is only reflective of many others who spend even more time on them for the betterment of our far north Glendale community and the importance of the North Glendale Community Plan toward achieving that goal. I brought this book to emphasize the amount of time, effort, and... I brought this book to emphasize the amount of time, effort and expense the community and city staff has spent in compiling this plan for the far north Glendale community, which was adopted by the city in 2011. However, since its adoption, we need to bring to your attention that nothing has been implemented, no dialogue toward implementation has taken place, and proposed developments are in process that are clearly contrary to the provisions, vision and intent of the plan. As a member of the affected community, I am here to ask that steps be instituted and direction be given at all levels to preserve and abide by the provisions of the plan and maintain its integrity. The vision plan contained in the, or the vision statement complained in the plan, we value and embrace a rural suburban lifestyle which allows us to live and work close to nature, offers unique and varied neighborhood-based shopping opportunities, quality schools, a variety of recreational opportunities, and recognizes our connection to the mountains, neighboring communities and our history. We seek to protect open space, advocate sustainable and responsible development, preserve and enhance neighborhood character, provide transportation options and balanced land uses. So we are asking that you please look at this plan and give the direction that is needed to city to maintain it. We're being faced with several items right out the gate that are contrary to the plan. Thank you.
Mr. Higani.
Yes, I was going to ask, staff want to respond to this at all?
Well, can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe you can find out from Ms. Stubbs exactly what projects and what processes she feels are not being dealt with in accordance to, with the plan, because we all are very supportive of it.
I know that.
I'm very supportive of it. And I am concerned when I hear from the community that they feel that it's not being adhered to. So I would love for someone from staff to sit down and to report back to us so that we know if there's a disconnect or if there are things that were moving before or what the issue is.
Will do, and we will send a memo to the council about the results of that.
Same thing. Let's find it. Okay, Abbott Hoffman, followed by Mike Moehl.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff and public. Albert Hoffman, native of Glendale. I guess, Mayor, I ought to put my house into that group. It was built by Anna Walt in 1933. We bought it from his daughter after he passed away and he was living in it the whole time until we bought it 47 years ago, so.
Put your house on the list.
Yeah. I'm not sure I want to do that, but anyhow, it is original except for what I added on in the back, so.
I know, we're going to ask you to take it down. You're going to have to take that down.
I came this evening to talk about the presentation made by Arum last week, Arum Cassazian, about the $73 million, the smart meter, smart grid project. And I want to say to the public, he got that data from me. And I forward you the information that I had, that I got from the city document and from approved agenda items that spent money on that project. And I did understand that it's not all spent yet, but it's obligated. What I don't understand is where the 25 million or whatever it was came in from the government to purchase the smart meters themselves. I'm not sure where that happened or where that's documented and all that stuff I sent you. So sometime I'd like to get with you and go over that, see if I can figure that out. So along the lines of all the issues we're having with raising the rates, this particular home electricity report, it's interesting, must cost considerable money to produce this. There's a lot of data here. Tells me, my gosh, I use most of my power from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock in the morning. Yeah, that's when I get up, make coffee, we cook breakfast, stands to reason. I really deplore the fact that the city and the public knows what I'm doing. This thing should be eliminated. If the utility is hurting for funds, don't do things like this. It's not needed. We don't need it. The people don't need it and the city certainly shouldn't be keeping track of what we're doing. That's invasion of privacy, security, and you name it. And there's whole issues with the smart meter system about their vulnerability to cyber attacks. A cyber attack could render our whole water system and electric system useless. And it's a dangerous thing we involved in. And I've contended all along, you have no idea the software costs that you're getting involved in. I did that for a living and I know what we're doing and I know it's not straightforward. Now you said not everything's being done, but if you're going to complete the smart grid system, I guess that's going to happen soon, isn't it? Supposedly. You have to spend that obligated money. So that is still something that has to be done. So another thing that has really perturbed me is I found out that you're going to have the report, the presentation from GWP on smart meters or on the electrical rate increase next Tuesday, National Night Out, something you guys have proposed to support for years and years and years. And this is the 30th anniversary of National Night Out. We're planning an event. I cannot come next week because we're hosting an event. I'm the president of our homeowners. I have to be at the National Night Out. I think it's deplorable. I sent you all an email. It didn't get to Councilman Sinanian. It was just unbelievable that you're going to stoop that low to keep as much public out as you can because it's National Night Out for such an important thing. You delayed it three weeks ago, delayed another week. Come on, we're not a bunch of oafs out there. We understand what your plore is here. Keep as many people that are going to come and speak out. You don't like to hear them. Mayor Weaver is tired of being lamb-based for 10 years. Maybe you should give it up. You know, we are, you are our employees. You work for us. Treat us like we have something to know. We know more than what you think you do. We do. Okay? And the way they get treated, this Quintero calling down Milano every time for he's an owner of an apartment building. Good lord. How, that's so weak, I can't believe it. And last week, your thing to Mrs. Moehl was just unbelievable, Mayor, or our, it's just, we don't need that kind of treatment.
Your time is up.
Oh yeah, I know. It's, uh, thank you.
All right, well, let me respond to Mr., that's final card?
No, there's two more cards. No, no, we speak after each.
My good friend, Mr. Hoffman. I respond to Mr. Milano because he continually talks about overcrowding and I know you're also a apartment owner, but he continually talks about overcrowding in the city of Glendale and overcrowding and we need more parks. Yet his major investment was an apartment building on a very small lot, packed and not very good architecture either, I might add. So I'd just like to point out the irony of someone continually hammering about overcrowding in the city of Glendale when you chose to take your capital, you're part of the problem. So that's my response to Mr. Milano on that particular issue.
Again, Mr. Quinter, Mr. Ochoa, would you like to address the conspiracy theory that's been presented here?
Well, the conspiracy suggests that we're trying to hide something and with all the input, the number of meetings and the fact that we've had a GWP commission meeting last Monday, we have another one this coming Monday, you have the council meeting to consider the rate increase the immediately following day and then the actual vote, should the council actually introduce the ordinance a week after that, it would suggest that you'd have better luck hiding a carrier task force than it would this particular policy debate.
Are we going dark for two weeks?
We're going dark the second half of August and the first week of.
So we'll be here on the 13th.
We'll be here on the 13th. If the council introduces, we would have the, we would have the vote at that time.
How many public meetings have we had, not counting the GWP meetings? I mean, sorry, not counting the commission meetings.
Not counting the commission meetings. We had, we had six scattered throughout the city, far north to south, east, west. We, I personally attended the last four and can tell you we had very good turnout and were able to interact with lots of folks. That's in addition to the, the kind of coffee in the parks, small little events that we had. That's in addition to all the social media. That's in addition to the number of articles that have been written by the news press on this very issue.
And meeting with the Board of Realtors and meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and I don't know how many others.
Matter of fact, we met with the Board of Realtors, own private audience just this morning. And we have met with the Chamber of Commerce on several occasions at their request with their board. So it has been discussed and more so, it's been discussed as really a continuation from the council's policy discussion last year when a multi-year rate increase was put on hold by the council at the behest of many opinion leaders in the community who felt that at that time, the economy still just was too fragile to consider that kind of rate increase. Keeping in mind that you haven't had a rate increase for base rates since fiscal year 08 and the fuel adjustment charges that did occur all have been ratcheted back down. So you've had, at this point, people are paying the same amount in 2013 as they were in 20, or 2008 for energy. That's just not a recipe for a sustainable viable utility.
So we will have the first meeting on the rates next week.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully there'll be an, not introduction, but motion to approve the ordinances.
If that's the council's pleasure.
And then the following week, we'll hear it again and that would be the adoption.
And keeping in mind that when we do have the National Night Out event, we've had it for the last 16 years, I think over the last four, the council's canceled the meeting. And generally before that would keep the agenda light, as you heard Mr. Taktalian earlier, we have two action items, the rate plan and the proposed vacation of an alley along the Brand Boulevard of Cars, to which we've gotten no negative comment. So the entire meeting will be dedicated to the rate plan.
Just keep off, no commendations, presentations, all of that. So probably by 6:15, we'll be into the item. Can't see where it'd take more than hour and a half.
Based on all the outreach, folks are going to come and make their comments, but it's a credit to the GWP staff that we have been in the community. Anybody who is mildly interested in the rate case knows about it. Anyone who has not wanted to know may not know, but we can only do so much to make sure that we give folks the opportunity to inform and educate themselves.
How long a presentation do you estimate next week?
It was interesting, based on the feedback from the GWP commission, they said keep it short and sweet. Talk about the impact on single family, talk about the impact on businesses and leave out all the rest. And so we probably will go relatively short.
I'm here to tell you next week, if there are like 50 speakers, 50 speaker cards, it's going to be two minutes each. If I have less, maybe it'll be three. But in the, in the desire to make it a short meeting, maybe I'll just do two minutes on everybody so we can get out faster. That's next week to decide. So with.
And Mr. Weaver, anyone who cannot attend the meeting certainly may submit their written responses or written comments to the clerk, which is passed off to all of us.
Okay, next speaker, Mike Moehl, followed by.
Is that funny? I mean, I don't know, I'm getting some laughs there and I'm saying that with all sincerity, but we have folks in the audience laughing. The alternative is to cancel the meeting because Mr. Hoffman can't make it. So I think our suggestion to submit written documents on any subject at any time is certainly appropriate.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Moehl. Mayor Weaver, as the longest-serving member of our city council, you have known for years of the crumbling and the aging of the Grayson Plant. Standing Councilman Quintero and recently re-elected members Friedman and Najarian have also known about the aging power plant. Long before the April election, before the recently approved 2013 budget made possible by millions of dollars in borrowed money in the form of municipal bonds, increased fees and increased taxes. And along before transferring another $21 million from Glendale Water and Power to the general fund into the pockets of our city unions' employees. Transferred money is primarily being used to pay for our inflated, unsustainable salaries and pensions and benefit of our great city union workers. In 2001, GWP Electrical Fund had over $198 million and the Water Fund had about $46 million totaling about $244 million. Today, these funds are virtually gone. Where did all the money go? Previous GWP manager Glenn Steiger was fired under the pretext of double dipping his expenses. This was misleading public statement by management. The truth was Mr. Steiger, the best employee that money could buy, was fired because he had a stake in the commodity market with GWP's money. That is, the rate payer's money. Under his leadership, Mr. Steiger lost over $120 million, that's $120 million of GWP money trading futures in electricity and gas. No public announcement was made on his actual dishonesty. It was all swept under the rug, just like the misleading $244 million that was in the GWP back in 2001. Today's leadership of GWP is run by two individuals who have no background in running a utility company. Mr. Steve Zern, who has a political science degree and no engineering background. Then Mr. Steve Lynn, no engineer but a lawyer, who previously worked under our city attorney Scott Howard. At community forums, Mr. Lynn would answer questions like an attorney, not as an engineer. In 2013, at a GWP community meeting being held at our local police station, our city attorney, Mike Garcia, and the people's attorney, Harry Zavos, debated the city charter changes A, B and C. People were angry that night when they asked about our, asked our new city manager, Scott Ochoa, where did the $244 million GWP money go? Councilmembers continue to act surprised when they have been cannibalizing the GWP for years and passing so-called balanced budgets from borrowed money, new and increased fees and taxes. Recently, at the 11th hour, our city manager and councilmembers had the audacity to tell the people, we needed to set aside $5 million for emergency repairs without any competitive bidding. Before the April election, even the representative from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, that's IBEW, came before the council while negotiating and reported the Grayson Plant needed repairs and they were against any large transfers of money from the GWP to the general fund. Because of diversion of funds from GWP and the mismanagement of city resources, council now wants to increase our electrical rates approximately 30 to 70% over the next five years. Plus another $60 million bond is in the planning stage to keep the utility company afloat. And a recent staff report, according to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, a penalty of up to $1 million per day per penalty will be assessed if our utility company does not fulfill its responsibility. Our city fathers must be turning over in their graves as they never envisioned the GWP to become a cash cow for the city unions', salaries and pensions. As usual, lawyer, lawyer Aaron Najarian will do his dog and pony show and suggest council sell GWP to Southern California Edison for council's many mismanagement mistakes. Thank you. My name is Mike Moehl.
Gosh, it's awful amazing how Mr. Moehl can reinvent history.
I wrote down master of hyperbole. He was a, he said it himself, he was a fertilizer salesman all his life. So I think it's appropriate that he was in that business.
And then, and then what he stretches at the beginning when he's talking about Glenn Steiger, where we know it up here why he's gone, and it's the furthest thing from what Mr. Moehl said, when he says all this. when he says all this blank, blank stuff, people at home are listening, and some are actually believing he's talking fact. But he's talking garbage. Garbage. Good night, Mr. Moehl. Doesn't want to stay.
Weaver, let me just say, addition to all the other hyperbole, the $120 million loss in trading futures, and he just makes it up as he goes along. But he opened up with the crumbling Grayson, the crumbling Grayson Power Plant. It's not crumbling. I've driven by it a million times. It's super well-maintained, I might add. We've spent lots of money rebuilding. We've rebuilt the yard, et cetera, et cetera. So just that alone tells you his mindset. This is also the gentleman that predicted at the beginning of the Great Recession that we were headed to hell in a handbasket. We would be declaring bankruptcy, et cetera, et cetera. We're still here and doing just fine.
No, it just gets impossible to respond intelligently to somebody like that that throws out so much false garbage. Might as well not. If we try to do it, then we're accused of attacking the poor person that's been coming here for 10 years and throwing this garbage at us, like we're a bunch of dunces sitting up here. Unbelievable. Really unbelievable. People continue to make mistakes putting us up here to be dunces, according to him. Well, enough said. Our last speaker, Park Lim Kim. I thought that might be you. You're not going to give us any problems about the power plant, are you? I don't think so. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Park Lim Kim, Korean artist. I'm -- thank you very much. I'd like to give to Glendale City Hall because I attended that over there celebration. So we thank you very much. So if we have a chance, this is a Korean nation flower. This is a white. We have a pink and purple, very beautiful flower. So if we have a chance, I'd like to donate to a real plant near Glendale that park around the auditorium, you know, over there. So we hope that it's the peaceful unification, please pray, our Republic Korea. And then I really thank you, Glendale City, all members. So I'd like to give to a little...
We'll make sure that goes in a very nice location.
Oh, thank you. Because my daughter graduated Glendale High School, so she lives in...
Glendale High?
Yeah. Six years, you know, around here. And now it's Albion. We have Albion. So I live in Los Angeles downtown also. Thank you. I remember your speech. It's a very thank you for -- thank you. God bless America, Glendale City.
Thank you. And get her phone number on here in case she talks about plants. Here, just give it to Rita there. Pass this round. Put your phone number on here, Park, if we want to reach you. Thank you for coming from Los Angeles. Okay, I have no more cards? Any new business? No?
We'll be adjourned.
Okay, we stand adjourned at 7:37.